We're reading here in the City Administration Building. It's also available online that you can also see that. So with that, I'm going to ask, Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes.
Thank you. So again, today is Commissioner Dick's chance to do the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Thank you, God, for giving us today. Please be with our teachers and our administrators at our schools as they start the new school year. Please be with our students while they're learning onsite or at home and help them to continue to grow and learn through the year. Thank you for all the opportunities you've given us in our community. Please be with us as we make our decisions today and in the future. Please help us be wise. In your name we pray. Amen.
So, yeah, September 1st and off, and this happens, the first meeting happens on the first day of the month and the year seems to be flying by some parts of it now, so. Thank you. So again, we have the approval of the minutes. We want to go ahead and if there are any corrections that need to be offered, otherwise they're going to stand as approved or as presented. Okay, seeing that, we'll go ahead and those will stand. So now is the time for a public comment. Again, if you would, if you will come forward, state your name, use the mic, and again, limit your comments to five minutes. So we'll go ahead and we'll open that public comment section of our of our meeting today. Okay, seeing that there is no public comment, we'll go ahead and we will move on to item four, or item six, I'm sorry.
Yeah, item 6A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from Enhelicca Castillo Chapel on behalf of Community Mexican Fiesta Association to allow the mayor to proclaim the month of September 2020 as Hispanic Heritage Month in Garden City, Kansas.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion when we approve the proclamation as presented.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Sessna. Do we have a second?
A second.
So it's been seconded by Commissioner Ortiz. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mayor, Enhelicca would like to invite you to attend the scholarship pageant, which will be held September 12th at 7:00 PM at the Garden City Community College.
And then to read the proclamation.
And to read the proclamation, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Item 7A, under report of the city manager, Assistant City Manager Cunningham and Stuart Nelson of Gibson Mancini Carmichael Nelson will provide an update on the GCPD evidence of municipal court facilities located at 310 North 7th Street. Jennifer?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
I'm going to give this to Ceylin to pass around for you to look out while we chat. It is just, it is just an enlarged version of what was in the packet, and then it has some details in the corner about support information. So it's essentially this right here. It's just blown up so that you can actually see it. I wanted to make sure as we went through this that you had it available in case there were any specific questions for myself or for Stuart. So, as you're aware, we purchased this building back in June, and this is under the city manager's update so that we can kind of tell you where we are. We've been in and out of the building. I'm sure you've heard from people around town that the police department has been using it for training. There's been SWAT there and all sorts of other things going on, and so ahead of that construction, we have been utilizing it for other purposes, which is great. We've had some people out to look at the roof. We've had people out to look at HVAC. We've definitely been doing all of the things to kind of start this ball rolling, all while Stuart and his staff have been working diligently to bring us something on the layout and design portion of it. So what is before you is the layout, which is a little bit different than we initially proposed in our RFP. I like the changes. I think that they make sense. I think they flow really nicely, and, but we did go through several renditions of this. We shared it with GCPD staff. We shared it with the evidence techs who would be using the area. We shared it with municipal court staff that would be officing in the area and using the courtroom, and they suggested some changes along the way to ultimately get us to this design. In addition to meeting both of the audit requests from McGrath, both from the evidence audit and from the the original organizational study done for the police department, this design does do several other things. It does approximately see 18 more people into the courtroom and doubles our accommodation for a waiting area at the municipal court facility. It's a much, much more user-friendly space than municipal court currently has, and we also actually have the ability to submit this plan. Stuart got it to me in time that we were able to submit it to the the person who would actually come out to Garden City to provide our accreditation, and we were able to get their approval that this would meet with the accreditation standards. And so we're very excited about that, and we're very excited that we got it early enough in order to be able to do that. So when you look at this design, you'll see that municipal court has about 8,000 square feet, and the police evidence storage has 10,824 square feet. They do have approximately a third more additional space than they need for evidence, so it gives them plenty of room for future growth. And they were able to get one additional car plus a, you'll see in the storage garage where there are cars parked, you'll see on the right-hand side at the top, there's kind of a different shaped vehicle that is for the evidence van, and that's what they take to where homicides or things like that, where the police are collecting a lot of evidence at once, and they're processing those pieces of evidence on scene. And so this actually protects that vehicle and all of the very expensive equipment that's in it. So we were able to get that, plus we were able to get nine spots on top of that. So really good utilization of this space, and overall, we're extremely happy with how everything's laid out. I will answer any questions you have about where anything's located or how it will function for the public or anything like that, but I also just wanted to note that we also have gone in and inventoried all of the equipment that was left by the Telegram building, mostly desks, cubicle style, inventoried those and gave municipal court and the police department the first look at those because obviously they're the ones that are going to have new spaces, and then opened those up to additional departments. I am happy to report that as of Friday of this week, we will have a completely empty building, clean slate, ready for before pictures, and ready to start moving into the next phase. So staff has been working really hard on getting this to where it needs to be, and it's taken a lot of people. Tyler Patterson from the Electric Department is not here today, but he deserves all of the kudos for this because he has worked extremely hard to make this happen and be ready so quickly. So with that, I'll answer any questions, or if it's specifically about the design, Stuart, I asked Stuart to be here as well to answer any of your questions.
So I did want to ask a question concerning, I know there were some things you thought that the Telegram or even the Historical Museum might want, be interested in. Were they able to come and look at any of those, or did they get a chance to?
So the things that are there, we, there's actually in the one area where, which is going to be part of evidence, there's a basement, and there is a bunch of stuff from the Historical Society stored there, and they will actually be getting that out and taking that back and moving it to another facility. I have a meeting with them on September 26th to do that. But other than that, no, once the Telegram folks actually got all of their stuff and got some movers in place, the only thing that they really left behind were the dust and the cubicles.
Oh, nice, okay.
Everything else was, everything else was gone.
Yeah, there was a lot of thing, there was a lot of stuff in there.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So, any other questions or any other thoughts?
I kind of just had one question on the, for this impound storage. So there's really no man door to get to that garage. Are you using just the overhead garage door to get access to that room?
There's actually a man door right next to the garage opening.
There's, okay, are those not walls?
Um.
Okay.
I don't have a pointer, but right next to the garage door, so where the van.
Yeah.
And then there's a man door right below the garage.
Yeah, I thought those were walls.
What you see is just striping.
Okay, striping on, okay. So just floor striping on the, in the garage for storage area? Okay, yeah.
I had received a question about the the property line of the building or where the right-of-way line is here and then here. Those egress-only doors, Stuart, I know this one is, and is the rule different about a door opening, swinging out into the outside of the property area to the right-of-way?
You know, that door could actually swing in because our occupancy is such, because it requires swinging out, so I think that'd change.
Just to repeat that for people, Stuart said that it could actually swing in because of occupancy load. It wouldn't necessarily need to swing out.
And I don't know that that is the property line, but I would guess if it's.
It's very close.
It's in the downtown. It's got to be close. There's, and then the back of the building too, I'm not sure where the property stops and the alley right-of-way begins.
I think it's pointing the same.
Yeah, more than likely, yeah.
So, and you anticipate that people will park in the back and walk to the front, is that correct?
So Mayor, they actually have a couple of options. So the parking lot in the back, obviously, there's some parking, you can see cars in the front. There's also approximately 18 parking stalls going down the north side of the building that are, that are like angle-style parking, and then if you are familiar with where this is located, across the street on the west side, there's also another parking lot, and I could foresee people parking there. Now, I will tell you, evidence is not going to have much traffic. They're going to have mostly police officers dropping stuff off, the occasional person to pick something up. They're going to park right in front. I mean, that just makes sense for them. With municipal court, although it may seem like with 100 people coming to court, we have a lot of cars, that's actually not true. About 80% of our population that comes to court is getting dropped off by someone. They're either, or they're walking. They, you know, some don't have driver's license and some just don't have vehicles. And so family member or friend or whoever is dropping them off. Right now, for the entire municipal court load, we do use the parking lot of the Fannie County Administration Administration Building. So you know, if you've been over to that building, parking is always tight there, and I think that that depicts kind of our our driver load. We just don't have a lot of people who drive. So I think you'll see them use all of those things.
So as far as the handicapped, will they be on the side or in the front? I didn't know.
So likely where they will be, I'm guessing, and this is something that we'll, we'll have to work out, but there's on the, where you see staff entrance, I'm going to point this out just so you.
No, I appreciate that, yeah.
So right here where you see the staff entrance, just slightly this way, Matt, if you scroll down, it may show the parking spaces. So you could maybe have some handicap parking here, and you could maybe have some handicap parking here. This is the community entrance right here. This is where they come in to go to municipal court. This is our metal detector right here.
Great. Any further questions or comments?
One last question I had was kind of in that southwest corner, there's an empty room, just, what's the reason? Is there future use for that?
There's not. Actually, what you'll see right there is that that's a wall that that puts up an area that is an old, is the current stairwell, that we don't want the public or the police officers having access to when they come into the building. And so I'll point out to you. This is where you go down the stairs, and this is where you would come up the stairs. Now, there, there are a couple of doorways between that, and you will not be able to access this area. If you have to go down to the basement, you will have to access through here, which is only accessible by the evidence techs and police officers.
So there won't be no floor put over those stairs to close those off?
No. We talked about doing, you know, what the, what the different options there were, and really, the only thing that we want to achieve here is the inability for someone to go down that stairway.
Looks good. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, yep.
Thank you.
Items 7B, 7C, and 7E are staff reports. If you've got any questions on those, we'd be happy to try to answer them.
I did want to say thank you for sending out that, the highlight on the sales tax, and that was extremely good news for Fannie County, so.
Welcome. Under Meetings of Note, we'll just draw everyone's attention to tomorrow night's meeting in Dodge City for the annual meeting of the Southwest Kansas Coalition. That's the legislative lobbying partnership between the cities of Garden City, Dodge City, and Liberal. The meeting is at 5:30 PM, and the location is the Boot Hill, Boot Hill Museum. The, and that is an open meeting. If folks want to attend, the governing bodies don't take action at that meeting, but they bring back an annual legislative platform that each commission considers separately. And then if all three commissions approve that platform, that becomes the platform of the coalition. Also, just to put on everybody's calendar, September 29th is the fifth Tuesday this month, and we would have a town hall meeting, and if it's your wishes, we would do those, do that one in this building at 7:00 PM.
Any other changes to that meeting? Okay, nope, that looks great.
All right, I think we're ready for the appropriation ordinance. Item 9A, if approved, it would be ordinance number 2514-2020A.
I move that we approve appropriation ordinance number 2514-2020A.
So it's been moved, do we have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Commissioner Euler. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Item 10A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the Uniform Public Offense Code for 2020. If approved, it would be ordinance number 2874-2020. Jimmy?
Thank you, Matt. Mayor and Commissioners, good afternoon. This is the annual changes that we have with the UPOC. You might remember from previous, and the STO, these are the, essentially the, what's prosecuted in municipal court primarily. UPOC, you're dealing with things like battery, domestic battery, interference of law enforcement. The STO, that's all your traffic, traffic-related ordinances, DUI, stuff like that. So there were not a lot of major changes this year. In fact, the League of Kansas municipalities did not even do a new STO, they just republished the old one. However, I kind of followed this throughout the year, and there were some changes that I thought needed to be made, just to kind of clean the code up a little bit. A lot of those really are only going to affect municipal court procedurally. You know, one of the things was that there was a reference to a certain type of sentencing provision that really doesn't even apply in municipal court, and that's, and that's because a lot of times, we take some language from state statutes and bring it over to the ordinances. Not all the time that gets caught that something doesn't apply. So that's what's going on there. One of the main things, though, is that our charter ordinance, I believe that's charter ordinance 28, that requires any mandatory sentences to be served. You can't serve them by house arrest, work release, anything like that. What I noticed is some of that language was imported from state statute, kind of allowed for that to happen. They kind of allowed for a house arrest provision in the D, sorry, community service provision for the DUI ordinances, and a domestic battery, in the domestic battery and battery ordinance, there was a work release provision. So I did some changes to remove that. Another thing is, is that a lot of the ordinances dealt with the regulation of firearms and knives, and there's actually a couple of state statutes that prevent municipalities from doing that, so I just removed those. And I think the two biggest things that will be appreciated down at municipal court would be with domestic battery evaluations, I changed the language on that to make it clear that you have to actually go to a certified program that's approved by the Attorney General, because in the past, we've had some people try to do it online, and it's just a lot, you know, it doesn't really address the purpose of it. So we, I just wanted to make that clear. I think it'll save some argument probably down at municipal court. And one that a lot of our defense attorneys really wanted was the change to the DUI, to the DUI evaluation. Right now, you, you have to get a DUI evaluation before you're sentenced. So you might plead guilty, you come back for sentencing, they ask you if you have a DUI evaluation done, and if you don't, they just have to continue it. And if you come back, the same thing happens over and over and over again. So sometimes when people are in jail, they cannot get those. And when people are going to the KDOC, serving a substantial sentence, they're never going to get that, so that means the case never gets resolved. If we got a court-appointed attorney, the court-appointed attorney never gets paid on that case because it's never resolved. So this creates an exception for some limited purposes to try to address that, and I also added some, an exception for, you know, somebody's in the hospital, the judge, or has some type of medical condition, the judge can say, all right, you don't need to do it right now, let's just get this, get you on probation, you can, you can do the evaluation on probation. So those are the essential things this year, so does anyone have any questions about that?
No, it's, the changes have really, it adds a lot of value, so thank you. And then your experience with municipal court really is too, so.
Thank you very much.
Any questions, or do we have a motion?
I move to approve ordinance number 2874-2020.
So we have, we have a second from, by Commissioner Sessna, so it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you.
And then item D is the standard traffic ordinance portion of that. The presentation just given still applies, so if you would like to approve that one, the ordinance number is 2875-2020.
So do we have a motion?
I move that we approve ordinance number 2875-2020.
So it's been moved, do we have a second?
A second.
So it's been seconded by Commissioner Ortiz. So any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you.
We still have nine minutes before the public hearing. Switch to item D.
Okay.
That's all right? The governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance rezoning property from agriculture to single-family residential for the property located at North 3rd Street and Stone Street. If approved, it would be ordinance number 2876-2020. Carol? Melissa?
Mayor and Commissioners, afternoon. We bring before you a rezoning, which will essentially be the milestone addition. This is a addition that is just east of the North Borough, replat on North 3rd Street near the cemetery. The surrounding zoning to the north, south, and east is agriculture, and to the west is our dash three multifamily. Will be rezoning 1.41 acres. The applicant is requesting to rezone this property to do single-family housing. The property is currently vacant, and this residential development will have eight total lots, and those will be single-family homes. The applicant has filed for approval of both the preliminary plat milestone addition and the final plat milestone addition. The preliminary plat was approved by the Planning Commission on September 19th, 2019, and the final plat has been provided that meets the minimum regulations of the Garden City zoning and subdivision regulations. The required development agreement will accompany the Rural Housing Incentive District ordinance as this development will be part of the RHAD program. You may make the recommendation and state the findings according to Section 27.040, and below is a complete list of those criteria. The alternatives before you, you may re, pardon me, the governing body may approve the rezone ordinance, or you may not approve the rezone ordinance. Staff recommends the governing body approve the rezone ordinance. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the rezone order request at the September 19th, 2020 meeting. Want to get to any other questions?
Yeah, I, so I have a question. So you said eight, and what's the anticipated cost of the homes that they're going to be building?
I believe the anticipated cost of the homes will be in.
I saw it somewhere.
Yeah, I think it's $210,000. Lot and house.
Any, any questions? Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve ordinance number 2876-2020.
So it's been moved, do we have a second?
Second.
So it's been seconded by Commissioner Euler. Any further discussions or questions for Melissa? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Melissa.
Move on down to item E. The governing body is asked to consider, consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance resolution to abate a motor vehicle nuisance violation at 504 Evans Street. If approved, it would be resolution number 2857-2020. Carol?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. We do have a motor vehicle nuisance. We do have three vehicles on this lot at 504 Evans, a gray van, a tan van, and then a white Toyota vehicle. Those vehicles have been there since the end of July. We have tried our best to get ahold of the property owners, and we have not been able to get ahold of them. This resolution will give the city the right to be able to go onto the property to tow the vehicles, should we not hear back from them in the 10-day window after the resolution is passed. Your alternatives today are to approve the resolution or not approve the resolution. Staff recommends approval.
So it's all three vehicles that you'll be taking?
Yeah, they have not moved positions, they've, we have not been able to get ahold of anybody at the house. We, we do have a, an ordinance against inoperable vehicles, vehicles that are just motionless to staying there, and also they are parked, not parked on improved services as well, so.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2857-2020.
So we have a motion from Commissioner Sessna, do we have a second?
Second.
So it's been seconded by Commissioner Euler. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
Item F, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance resolution to abate a motor vehicle nuisance violation at 926 North 9th Street. Carol?
All right. This motor vehicle nuisance is very similar to the last one. We have, staff has attempted to contact the owners. There are four vehicles on this property that have not moved position, and as I said, we have not been able to get ahold of the residents or the owners of the property. If, if, if this resolution is approved, staff will have the opportunity to go on to private property to remove these vehicles. You have the options of approving or not approving, and just a fiscal note, this is with all vehicle nuisance, the cost for removing the vehicle is charged onto the properties owner, yeah, onto the property taxes as a lead.
If approved, this resolution would be number 2858-2020.
Okay. Any questions? If not, we'll call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve 2858-2020.
So it's been moved by Commissioner Sessna, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Euler. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So it's 1:28, Matt, do we have time to do?
Uh, no. All of those items.
Well, that's good, yeah. To be honest, no, yes.
We could move to do the consent agenda.
Would that work?
Yeah, we, good idea. If nobody would wish to pull anything off of the consent agenda under new business, 12C, the appropriate motion would be to approve items C1 through 4.
I move that we approve items C1 through 4 on the consent agenda.
Okay, so it's been moved by Commissioner Dick to approve items C1 through C4. Do we have a second?
Second.
So it's been seconded by Commissioner Sessna. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero.
It's about two minutes.
That only took 30 seconds, that's good. I do want to just make sure and note, we were invited to the Home Products Center in Ulysses, and then there is at your air desk, it has been canceled, so just to make sure you, if you purchase tickets, which I had already, the one time I was on time about purchasing something, so. So it is now 1:30. I want to open the public hearing for consideration to adopt the development plan and establish the rural housing incentive. the Rural Housing Incentive District, RHID, for milestone addition by ordinance as brought before us as a governing body. Melissa?
Thank you. As required by the RHID statute, the milestone addition development comes before the governing body to adopt the attached development plan and establish the RHID for milestone addition. This action is the last step the developer needs to take before you as a governing body in the RHID process. As I stated in the rezone case, this development is on North Third Street and Stone Street. It's just east of the North Borough development. This will consist of eight lots, single-family homes. They will have basement with garages and have fences installed and be intended to be sold to individual homeowners. The feasibility analysis for milestone addition estimates three homes will be built in 2020 and in 2021, the remaining two homes to be built in 2022. According to our chat study to meet our housing needs, we need to build 106 housing units per year between 2019 and 2024. Based on the current RHID feasibility analysis from other existing RHIDs, we predicted 126 homes to be built in 2020. However, we have only issued 39 certificate of occupancies for 2020, which does not meet the predicted RHID or chat numbers. Therefore, according to our chat study, Garden City shows a need for housing to be built within this development. If this ordinance is adopted, the county, USD 457, and Garden City Community College as taxing entities will have 30 days to evaluate the proposed RHID. Shall a taxing entity determine it has an adverse effect on their jurisdiction, then the taxing entity will need to adopt a resolution stating such. If no such resolutions are passed, then the ordinance shall be in effect. If within that timeframe, any of the taxing entities pass such a resolution, then the city will need to take action to repeal the ordinance as required by state statute. The alternatives before you, the governing body may approve the attached ordinance or you may not approve the attached ordinance. Staff recommends the governing body adopt... Pardon me. Adopt the ordinance. The developer will be using private financing to fund the eligible costs of the RHID. The city will reimburse property tax increments to the developer over the life of the project, which is up to 15 years. The amount of the property tax distributions cannot exceed $497,020 over the life of the RHID.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or any public comment? Or Melissa?
And I do have the developer here if you would like to ask any questions as well.
Thank you for choosing to build in Garden City or continue to build in Garden City. Any other questions? Or comments? So seeing none, we'll go ahead and we'll close the public hearing. So we're closing the public hearing and we're ready to consider the ordinance. Is that correct, Matt? Okay?
I'll make a motion, we approve ordinance 2877-2020.
So it's been moved that we approve ordinance number 2877-2020. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
So it's been seconded by Commissioner Dick. Any further discussions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So we're down to old business, is that correct, Matt?
Correct.
Okay. Jumped back and forth so many times.
11A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the budget for the Eighth Street corridor and Streetscape reconstruction project, from which we can provide KDOT with a maximum city cost share. This is for KDOT project number 028TE46901. Andy?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Just for your information, any questions, detailed questions that we'll have on this? Adam Sharp with Wilson's here for our engineers to help us, to help me, help you. Let's begin. On August 12th of 2020, the Kansas Department of Transportation contacted the city requesting the city provide them with the maximum city share for the construction budget costs for the Eighth Street corridor and streets to get reconstruction project for the purpose of awarding or rejecting the project additive. KDOT requests this figure be provided before the bids are open and KDOT advertised the project on August 26th of this year, and they'll be opening the bids on September 16th of this year. And the base project is as follows, will be switching water meters to a newer water line and abandoning the older water line, reconstructing the road on Eighth Street from St. John's to Buffalo Jones, new landscaping and Streetscape on both sides of the street from Stevens Avenue to Buffalo Jones, and then realigning Eighth Street at Stevens Avenue intersection, angle parking on the east side of the road, south of Stevens Avenue, intersecting the bakery, and decorative lighting from St. John's to Buffalo Jones. Then the additive is new landscaping and Streetscape on both sides of the road, south of Stevens Avenue to St. John's, and angle parking on the west side of Eighth Street at the Brethren Church. The city engineer's total project cost estimate for the base additive is shown below, and for the base and the additive, excuse me, at a total city cost of $1,870,428.25. And if you have questions, we can go through some of that. But the purpose of this agenda item is to approve the overall budget for the project and also to provide KDOT with the maximum amount the city wishes to approve in terms of the local match toward construction. This amount will then be used by KDOT for determining whether the additive bid can be included in the project or not. The city may be prohibited from awarding the construction bid additive that takes the local match over the amount, as well as prohibited from rejecting the additive if the total base bid and additive bid are within the city's provided construction match. The city has the available funds for the project in the amount of $2,241,430.51, and that does not include the $750,000 that KDOT has matched in this project. Let it be known also that the engineering on this project started in 2017 and right-of-way has been acquired, therefore some of these funds have already been expended. We're bringing you, if we started on day one, the total cost of the project. Therefore, to give the commission additional flexibility and discretion in its decision-making, we recommend establishing a total project budget of $2,991,430.51. The total project budget minus the KDOT expenses establishes the $2,241,430.51 that we had talked about. The specific answer to KDOT's question then becomes the new total maximum city share minus construction engineering, preliminary engineering, equipment, and right-of-way of one, and that brings that number, when you take that $2 million and take out the construction and these things I just mentioned, that would be a total construction cost share for the city that of $1,650,000, or $650,664.26. The 1.6 million is $371,002 above the estimated city share of construction costs for base bid and additive. Establishing the higher project budget and maximum city cost share for construction does not obligate the governing body to approve any bid. However, it does give the city a better opportunity to include the additive bid in the project. So at this number that we're recommending, we have that better chance of moving that project all the way south. The governing body will still have the authority to award or reject the project. This decision will predetermine whether the additive is included in the bid award decision. KDOT will decide based on the city's construction cost match figure of the 1.6 million plus if the additive bid will be included in the project. Okay. Questions?
Yeah, this was really well done. It was, it's a, yeah, it's a complex issue. So with this, if we include this, then there isn't a better chance or that KDOT would consider to do the whole thing based on us approving a higher construction bid?
Correct. The more available funds we have to distribute to this project, if the bids come in higher, then, yeah, there's a little more detail to that.
Right. I just want to make sure I got the gist of it and, right, exactly. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, to kind of boil it down a little, in a way that you can't really put on paper.
Nevermind. You got one.
Yep. That's good.
Is, the bid decision will come through us, just like in Kansas, right? We got on campus, we said, here's the bid. The city wanted to prefer to reject it. But what KDOT has to predetermine before they can send that to us is whether the additive is included in that or not. Because let's say we had $1,000 was our budget, just put it in really simple terms. We had $1,000 in our budget, the base bid was $900, and the additive was $150. That's $10.50, right? It's over our budget. So if that was a low bid, they would only send us the base bid. If our budget was $1,100, then they would send us the base bid and the additive. But they have to be able to predetermine that because if they send us both, if another contractor would say 925 and 50, well, now he's higher on the base bid, he's lower on the combined. So if they send those both to the city, then now the city has the ability to say, well, I kind of like that contractor better, so I think we're gonna, we're gonna do the additive, or vice versa. And in the KDOT world, that's not acceptable. It has to be a procedural, black and white issue. So, hopefully it already made sense, but if it didn't, this is really to help, so KDOT can predetermine whether they send us both or just one. And then we still have the ability to accept and reject that. At the same token, we want this number to be somewhere where we're willing to be, right? Because that's what they're gonna send us. So we don't have the ability to back out from that. It would just be canceling the project.
Yeah, I appreciate that we're actually gonna be doing the whole project and, you know, we're spending the time. Since we're gonna be down there and also doing a lot of work, I mean, it makes sense to really kind of combine the project and have that additive included.
And for clarity, this is not even the county's, what the county was proposing adding.
Hmm, okay. Yeah, I was, I'd wondered, because they'd spoken to us before about that at a meeting last year, so. Any questions for Andy or Adam? Okay.
All right, you want me to go through the additives or the alternatives?
That would be nice. Yes, thank you.
So here's what, here's what we're asking. Alternative one would be approve the Eighth Street corridor and Streetscape reconstruction project budget in the amount of $2,991,430.50 with a city construction cost match of up to $1,650,664.26 to be provided to KDOT for project 028TE-046901. Alternative two would be to deny that, those same amounts. And alternative three would be to direct staff to other alternatives, and staff recommends alternative one.
So with that, well, I'll go ahead and I'll open for a motion. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the Eighth Street corridor Streetscape reconstruction project in the amount of $2,991,430.51 with the city construction cost match of up to $1,650,664.26 to be provided by the, to the KDOT project 028TE046901. I probably didn't need to say all that.
Okay, no, that's okay. We have a motion. No, thank you that you did. We have a motion on the table? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
So it's been seconded by Commissioner Euler. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Andy, Adam, for the work.
Yeah, thank you, Adam.
A lot.
That may have been the hardest agenda item that we've ever put together. And they did a good job.
Yeah, really, really good explanation.
All right. So I believe we have time to begin item B before coming back to another public hearing at 2 o'clock. So I'll ask Jennifer to come up and present item 2B, which is the governing body's consideration of the guaranteed maximum price for bid package number two with a value of $3,904,270 and four additional buy-up options as part of the Garden Rapids project at the Big Pool.
And they're on their way in.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm gonna start this by going over my memo and then I'm actually going to turn it over to Todd and he'll go through their presentation. And then Hank is here to answer any, I think, yeah. Okay, just making sure Hank was with me still. Then I'll turn it over to Hank to go through some design stuff, and then I have a little bit of a surprise for you at the end of this. So, and then one of them will turn it back over to me so that I can share that with you.
And just so everybody's aware, we will interrupt at 2 o'clock if we're still going to do the public hearing and then restart.
Sure, no problem. Okay. So what is before you this afternoon, which you were aware that we were gonna be coming with this, is the bid package number two with a value of $3,904,270. And in addition to bid package number two, we also have four additional buy-up options, which we've previewed one of those to you previously. The other ones will be new. So what this kind of looks like is a combination of what you saw previously of bid package one and the buy-ups. We did those separately. Now we're doing bid package two and the buy-ups that go along with this together. I will give you the explanations that have been given to me, and I will also talk to you a little bit about from staff perspective, and then they'll talk to you a little bit more from construction perspective, why they were included, and their values and all of those sorts of things. So first, let's talk about the guaranteed maximum price for bid package number two being at $3,904,270. We are really happy with where everything came in, really impressed with the work that was done by McCowen Gordon to keep us on target with where they had thought bid package number two would be. So we're really, really excited about that. In addition to that, the four items that we are talking about today that could potentially be buy-ups to bid package number two would be, number one, wall tile at $43,924. Mill and overlay of the parking lot, which is $90,122. Cow wall windows at the bathhouse, which in the same location that the windows currently are, the actual windows, at $11,586. And then the breezeway options, and there's four of those. Bid package number two, as listed here, does not include any structure or shade or anything between the old building and the new building, and so that is how it is currently priced. Any of the other options are buy-up options. So let's talk a little bit about those different options. The wall tile is something that they have tiled the showers, and the tiled showers are something that is included in bid package number two. The additional cost would be to tile other wall areas within the bathhouse, and the construction team, McCowen Gordon, will show you exactly what that means. But it essentially means the rest of the areas within the men's and women's locker rooms that are bath areas, which does come at a cost of $43,000. I will share with you the comments from staff that I shared with McCowen Gordon during this, and it was twofold. One, tile is more difficult for us to repair from, on a staff level, because a lot of times lifeguards or parks or whoever is helping us manage the department is doing the repairs. And we're getting ready to open, we want to be able to do that quick, and we want anybody to be able to do that, whether that be me or some other staff member. And so tile does make that more challenging. The other thing that we do a lot of, that I know people don't see us do, is that we take machines in there and we actually spray from the top of the ceiling down to the floor and into the drains. And so tile does tend to break down over time with that, whereas a concrete wall with epoxy paint over it tends to hold up a little bit better, and we can repair that a little bit easier. One of the things that was pointed out to me by Matt was that it also gave the aesthetic that we've always had, right? It gives the feel of the old bathhouse if it's just paint over the concrete walls. And so I think that is also a nice touch. McCowen Gordon and Confluence pointed out that it does add a certain design element because you can have it be any color and different shapes and those sorts of things. And I would go back to what I've said all along, which is we want to put our dollars into the playability of this facility. But that is something for you to consider, and I wanted you to understand all of the conversations that have gone into each piece of this because it really, really has been ongoing and back and forth. The mill and overlay of the parking lot, instead of just a seal coat, obviously, that would, that would just be on top of the current parking lot to the west of the facility. The cow wall windows, I did have a meeting with McCowen Gordon and the design team this morning, and they did bring a sample of that, I believe, to show you exactly what that looks like. I know some of the photographs that were in there maybe were a... I know some of the photographs that were in there maybe were, looked a bit modern, or maybe like they wouldn't fit along with our design, and so this is a chance for you to see a sample of what that would look like. And they'll also provide you some additional details about what happens if someone throws a rock at that, or what happens if someone shoots a BB gun through that. What is, what is the difference between having something like that and having what we have now and, and what we would be going with in bid package number two, which is just a painting of the existing windows, but a removal of the wire mesh that is over them. And then jumping down to the last one is the breezeways. And once they get into the presentation, you'll see that there are four options. They range from a hundred and eighteen thousand four hundred ninety-eight dollars all the way up to a hundred and forty-one thousand two hundred and eleven dollars. And I actually costed those out to you as the annual amount on the bond as part of this entire project, because I think that's important for you to realize, right? When you're doing a big project like this, to see what it is actually gonna cost you. And so I have those listed out. You know, the differences really are an arched roof that, that is not covered, an arched roof that has some shade, an arch roof that has a true ten metal style roof over it, or like a trellis style, kind of like you would see in your backyard. And the McCowen Gordon team and design team can explain their thoughts on those and, and kind of how those would impact with weather, with repairs, you know, all of the, the things that we'll have to deal with once we begin, begin operating this facility. And once we're all finished today, then before you will be the alternatives to approve bid package number two and choose any or none of the buy-up options, but making sure that we state those and making sure we state what the price of those, when you approve them, would be greatly appreciated. And then if you don't want to approve either one of those, then we'll go through direction for staff. But at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Todd with McCowen Gordon, so he can actually go through the photo slides with you.
Commissioners, Mayor Andrew.
Good afternoon.
For having us today, we appreciate your time. And Jennifer, great job on the explanation. I think you made it really easy for me here. So before you, we've got some slides for the Garden Rapids at the Big Pool, and we're requesting the approval of bid package two and any or none of the alternates that, that you all seem, deem fit. So currently, we are just a little bit under budget with the base bid. So we, we, as Jennifer said, we, as a group, worked collectively to make sure that we stayed in that, in those budget guidelines there. So as you can see, we are about forty-five hundred dollars under the original budget. The seven alternates that we have, as, as Jennifer stated, are listed there. Do you want to go over to the slide for alternate number one, Matt? So the, the areas that we have in blue, that's what's included in bid package two. All the areas in green are the alternate, and all, all of that wall tile goes up eight feet off the floor, so it's, it's not full height to the ceiling, but it, it gets you above where all your wear and tear surfaces are. And Jennifer did point out some of the concerns that the staff has, and I think those are valid concerns. It is, uh, it takes a skilled craftsman to set tile and to do it properly. And painting, still, still, still takes somebody to know what they're doing, but it is, it is easier to do that with people in-house.
So as far as wear and tear and breakability, breakability of the tiles, so are they, are there something special? I mean, I'm sure construction grade, but I'm curious about?
It's, a lot of it is the cleaning process, just if you hit it at the right angle with a pressure washer, it can get behind there, and, and then over time, those tiles can pop loose. So, and you can do the same thing with paint if you get too close to it, but paint's just much simpler to patch. Okay. Alternate number two is the northwest parking lot, and that's milling the top two inches out, repairing any subgrade defects, and then putting two inches of new asphalt down. So you get some of the structural repair, you also get a parking lot that has a nice clean look to it as well. With the seal coat, you're essentially just putting a new, a new seal coat on it and new striping, and not addressing any cracking or, or, or structural issues that, that may be present in there.
And I know we walked across this, and we, and I cannot remember the condition, I feel horrible. I was trying to, and now there's so much equipment and everything.
Sure.
So the current condition of, of the parking lot, I mean, on the scale one to ten?
I would say it's in fair, or maybe just a little bit below fair condition. And we do, we did take a fair amount of pre-construction photos that are in our, our Procore documentation, and so those are available to, I think Jennifer has access and, and Matt as well.
And so my other question, how do we currently, it'd be in the past, how do, how do we take care of the parking lot? Was it just when we needed to, or was it just kind of a?
Sure.
I don't, I don't think it was ever, like, sanded or, you know?
While I've been managing the pool, staff on the pool side haven't done anything specifically. That doesn't necessarily mean that Andy or street crews haven't gone in and, and done something when they were repairing other areas, but not specifically to my knowledge.
Does this also address the entrance off of Maple? Because I know that's a, a really big dip.
On, it wouldn't. So it would go up essentially to the limits are where that's shaded in. So it would be that approach area, but as far as out in the road, no, it does not have anything out in the road.
And that's a, that's a drainage way, so, right? Eliminating the dip would require, require blocking the stormwater drainage way. It's probably more of a product of how much maple's been built up over the years, the crown, if you see on some older streets. You know, that, you know, that would probably be a separate maple project if you ever wanted to see that get smoothed out. Because you have to, you have to take that at about, at eighth of a mile an hour.
Which is probably good with how many people around.
Just after the many years of overlay on some of the streets, too.
They get that big, they get that crown built up.
Yeah, good question.
And any other questions on, on this particular alternate? Okay. On the cow wall, so we did bring a sample with us. This is a, a product that we'd be looking at doing at these sixteen locations. We're doing a great job, everyone. So this would be in place of the existing windows. Right now, they're scheduled to paint, and we feel like this may be an option that is gonna give you something that, that cleans up the look, still addresses some security issues that you may or may not have, and also feel like this is gonna maybe be a little bit more damage resistant than glass. If somebody throws a rock or shoots a BB, that glass is gonna shatter. Whereas here, it's a fiberglass product, you still get a, a hole in it, but you won't lose a whole window. But this is a product that is used on, on buildings all over the country, and it's, it's, a lot of it is for applications just like this, so.
And so translucent, because I don't think, I don't know if the bathrooms have any lighting in them or not, aren't they just?
Yeah, there's, there's.
Oh, there is, I just, it always seems so dark in there, but it's never.
This, this does allow some natural light to come through as well.
Okay.
So.
Pass this around if anybody would like to feel it's fairly lightweight product.
Yeah, it looks really.
But there's, we just, we felt like it was maybe a good alternate for the life cycle costs of the building. If you have to replace a bunch of windows, that gets very expensive very quick. So I thought this might be a, a good option to present here.
I, I mean, I like cow wall, but I think there's a, a cost savings where we can apply just a one-inch-thick glass with, you know, a number three obscure film on the, you know, on, on the pane itself, using a storefront, and you can achieve, we, we did that with a project over here for the gymnastics, and it was a, a huge cost savings, because we did look at cow wall. The other thing, I know a lot of these finishes kind of domino effect other issues, so when you said washing down of the walls on tile, what's the sealing material? And also, can we, I get, I haven't looked at plans, I don't know what finishes are, because with the H, or with the ventilation, I could see some of these windows being opened up during use to let, to allow just natural air going through. I don't know what the HVAC system is doing for some of those bath, the, the bathhouse itself, but I know a lot of these materials tie together, so being able to have operable windows, washing down walls, maybe an open ceiling concept, so.
So I can speak to some of that, and then you, maybe Todd can, can run me out. So the windows in bid package number two, as they are, are just a paint, just painting the windows? That are, oh, there you go. Sorry for all those people who didn't hear me. So bid package number two actually just includes painting the windows. We're not replacing those windows, because obviously, as Todd mentioned, that would be extremely expensive. So basically, it would be the windows that are there with the metal grates removed. We don't open those, we, we, they just stay as they are. And essentially, what we've done in the past is we just throw open the doors from the bathing areas when we wash those insides down, and then we close, close those up once they've had a chance to dry.
We're at two o'clock, can we take a pause right here and come back to this issue?
Thank you, Jennifer.
We'll finish that, so.
Sorry to.
Nope, thank you, Matt, for keeping an eye on the time, so.
You've got a published two o'clock notice, or published notice for a two o'clock public hearing to consider an order to, to declare an unsafe structure and order the completion of repairs or demolition at four oh one Hudson. The process would be to open the public hearing, hear the staff report, see if anybody wants to speak to the issue. Once everybody spoke to the issue, you can close the public hearing, and then the governing body would be in a position to discuss that further and consider the order.
Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and we'll open the public hearing.
And.
All right.
Carol?
Yes, I'll go over this, what we have before for the, before you for this public hearing. So just a quick background, on July seventh, this, this governing body did pass a resolution to set this public hearing date for the determination of four oh one Hudson Street on, on whether it's unsafe, unfit, or a dangerous structure. This public hearing today is a time for the owners, the owner's agents, or any lien holder on record, or any occupant of the structure, to appear and show cause why the structure located at four oh one Hudson Street should not be condemned and ordered repaired or demolished and removed. I do have, the owner of record today is here in the room, and, and I'm sure he will want to talk to you after I go over the staff report or this memo. This, typically, when we have a dilapidated structure like this, it's, it's typically an abandoned structure, and so nobody really is there to say, no, wait, I want to fix this up. Sometimes we do. But in this situation, the owners of record today recently purchased this home with the intent to fix up the structure. The owner actually got a building permit approved in between the time of the resolution and now, and has been working on the home. There are pictures, some before and afters, they're getting the footings ready, they're getting ready to pour the foundation walls for the basement. So they have been going through and getting inspections and getting this all ready to go so that the structure will be stable and will be able to cover up that big hole that's where the, where the basement should be for the property. So the, what, what you have before you today, before I let the, the owner speak, is, is an order, and the passing of this order is basically declaring that it's, that this governing body determines that it's unfaced, fit, unfit, unsafe, in dilapidated condition. The order gives the owner time to make repairs, to fix the home, so that it would not be no longer considered unsafe. It gives the owner up to sixty days, which would be the end of October, October thirty-first. I, I have talked with the owners, they said that that's more than enough time, they think that they'll, they'll have this basement shared away before, before that time. So the, staff does recommend that you approve the attached order as written, as we feel that, you know, if something, if for some reason the owner decides they just want to walk away and, and not finish what they've already started, which is very unlikely, since they've already put in some money into this. But it gives the governing body, the city, the, the teeth to go forward and, and continue with the, either repairing or, or demolition of this home. So with that, I'll let the owner speak, if you'd like to say. This is Benjamin Gonzalez.
Good afternoon, Mr. Gonzalez, thank you for coming.
I'm working on this house I purchased, and my wife bought it. We're trying to fix it up for my daughter, and I got a lot more done than what the pictures show. I already got my, all my rebar in there and everything, I'm on the inspection this week to pour the walls. So hopefully, if things go right and everything, I could have them all poured in a couple of weeks, so we could get your structure in there. And I'm gonna sign it and everything eventually. It won't take me, I can't afford everything one day, you know? But I'm working on it every day, every day, every day. I go work every day, after I get off of my job, I go work, I go work till nine o'clock, every weekend, Saturday, Sunday. And this weekend, I'm gonna get inspection Friday, so I could cover the walls. I already started, I got pictures on my phone, and I want to pour it in hopefully next weekend. And if it's okay, I want to get it done.
So, Mr. Gonzalez, will, will the sixty days that ten, and October thirty-first of 2020, would that give you enough time to get everything done?
To get the walls covered and the whole building covered, and the dirt filled in? I think so.
Okay.
Because I'm looking at two weeks to get them all poured. I want to get my inspection this week Thursday, and I'm gonna finish putting the foundation form.
The forms, right.
The forms.
Mm-hmm.
And hopefully, next week, next Thursday, Friday, we're gonna pour them in there. Once they're poured in there, I'll get everything out of the way, and today I bought some dirt from Clutz, I'm gonna start. I've been filling it up, but I've been buying load at a time, load at a time.
Right.
Because I can't fill in right where I'm doing the walls yet till they're up. Once they're up, I'm gonna fill it all in.
Okay.
The inside, I've been working on that slowly, too, I almost got it ready for, see, I'm gonna give this house to my daughter eventually.
That's, that's a beautiful gift, yes.
I live in eleven oh eight Chesna, that's my house. And she's a block away from me. She's got six kids, you know, and nobody wants to rent her because of family size. I'm gonna give her that house.
Well, thank you, thank you for coming today and explaining what, that you're working on it and that you're moving forward, so.
Are you doing all this work yourself, or do you have?
I have a couple of guys that come in on me in the afternoon, you know?
Yeah, that's good.
And a lot of it, I have family, my son-in-law from Greeley, he's a seaman worker. This weekend, we poured the floor. I have the footers and that one, the floor's already poured, and I made a little stairway down for it. And the rebar and all that, I can do that. You know, there's a lot of stuff that I can do, so. I like working. I got a liver transplant a while back, been six years this year.
Wow.
And God gave me a second chance in life. For what? I don't know, but I'm gonna take it anyway.
Well, it sounds like you, you've got a big project on your hands.
If I sit at home and, and do nothing, it's worse for me, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm better off working every day, every day, and God gave me a second chance.
Yeah, we just want to be able to give you enough time.
Right, exactly.
Because I know, I mean, a lot of work in thirty days, it, thirty days goes by quick, and like you said.
Well, I need at least sixty to get it all covered, the whole yard.
Yeah.
You know, to get the yard covered. And then the inside, like I say, ain't that bad, I do a lot of remodeling that myself, you know?
And there isn't any part of that that's in the order.
Right there, ever since I bought it, that's my project.
Right, yeah.
That hole in the ground.
And I think, I think that's our, our concern, is that part of the project, and so really, and then I, I know you're doing the other part, so that's the part that really, we want to make sure you have enough time to, because this, because if we, we go ahead and approve this, and we, then it's gonna be that ten, the October thirty-first date that you'd have to have it done. So we're just making sure.
I'm kinda sure I will, because like, if you want to see my picture, I'm almost ready to pour the walls.
Okay.
And hopefully, like I say, next weekend, we're gonna pour them.
Okay.
And hopefully, hopefully.
Hopefully, there's no rain delays in there, either.
That's been getting me for the best two months. I've, I've shoveled that dirt, uh, by myself three times since it rained. I had it real nice and clean like that, ready for, the rain came and brought everything back in.
I think if we approve the order, and then if our, our development department would give us an update on how that's progressing and where they're at with the inspections and everything, that, that would give us a better idea on how, how you're progressing with the project.
Well, thank you for coming today, Mr. Gonzalez. Anything else that you wanted to say, or before we?
Excuse me?
Is there anything else that you would like to say before we close the public hearing?
No, I'm good, I'm just hoping for a chance to get something done.
Oh, yeah, well, this, thank you. Well, we're looking forward to your daughter having a wonderful home and a place for her children.
And hopefully, it will be real nice, I want to improve that neighborhood, I want it to look good, you know?
Right, yeah.
I live that block.
We appreciate that, yeah, no, it's a big difference. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak, or?
Mayor, I'd like Carol to address, the commission passes the order. What is there that the property owner gets when we've determined that they met the requirement to, that it is safe and fit for habitat, and, and therefore they can move with confidence that the order is no longer in place?
Right now, the building has been red-tagged, meaning nobody can live in it. They, obviously, they can go inside and work on it, but we don't. Obviously, they can go inside and work on it, but we don't want anyone living in it. So when he gets to the point where he's got it all ready to go, and it becomes livable, then we will issue a certificate of occupancy, which will make it basically livable. It'll release the red tag on it and allow them to get utilities and everything squared away.
And that's the point that they're required to arrive at by October 31st?
Yes.
Okay, any questions for either Mr. Gonzalez or Carol? Okay, if not, we'll close the public hearing. Okay, now we are ready to take up this item.
Mayor, I make a motion. We approve the attached order as written.
So it's, we have a motion by Commissioner Sessna. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Euler. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries five to zero. Mr. Gonzalez, thank you so much for coming today. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. We were talking about windows.
Yes, windows, cot wall or some, I can't even remember the name of those.
Cow wall.
Cow wall.
Sorry, I left a problem in the other room.
Oh, too bad. Well, now we don't even know what they look like.
So I think that was the end of what I... I'll just repeat so that we can, everybody remembers where we were. So essentially, what's in bid package number two is that we would just be painting the windows and removing the metal fencing, or whatever you want to call it, that's over there now. I think that metal fencing is what has prevented us, I think, from having any issues with people throwing rocks or doing things like that. As far as windows breaking while we've been managing the facility, we haven't had that issue, and so...
Probably since the 80s, because I was a kid. I'm not breaking windows anymore down there.
Yeah, yeah. So we haven't had that issue, and we don't open them.
I had a question for continuity. So are these windows going to be on the newest, the building that you're building, the concession stand? Are these what's going to be used on that building, or...
So we've got a couple of different elevation views, but it is... Go back one slide there if you could. One more. So the new administration and concession building does not have any of these windows in it. So it's replacement in all of the existing windows.
The windows on the new building are actually windows where people are painting, and they're coming up to, and we're opening and closing those. So for admissions, concessions, and then concession delivery, there's no, as far as I've seen in any of the drawings, there's no, like, design windows on the new building. There's no windows that are just there for design purposes. They're actually all windows that we're using.
And the height on those, is that six foot to the bottom, is that right, of the existing openings?
To the, on the existing windows, those are up over eight foot.
Yeah.
Eight foot.
And that's roughly, it's probably a little bit different, but yeah, they are up higher. They're not down lower.
So the obscurity of the glass doesn't necessarily have to be there, because unless you're standing on somebody's shoulders viewing, you're not going to see anybody.
Just, I would think that you'd want some sort of, you'd want to obscure them just a little bit, just for people's comfort.
Unless you're on the slide, right.
Right. Just for people's comfort.
Yeah, well, I mean, I like the look. I think it cleans up, and it adds, I mean, it adds a lot to the outside of that, especially the bathhouse. I mean, especially, you know, being inside and outside. I wanted to ask a question on the tile. So the floors are going to be left as they are, is that correct?
There'll be a, we're doing all-new concrete floors in there, but they're a sealed concrete with a texture to them.
Okay.
Is that an epoxy?
It's a seal, it's a sealer product. I can get you a spec if you'd like on it, but it has an aggregate mixed in with it, and then it's just applied topically.
And so would this alternate number one, with the blue tile, the walls in the blue tile, would that remain if we didn't go with this alternate with the tile?
Correct. The blue tile is in the bid package regardless. The green tile, the green area is the buy-up option.
So the ceiling height in there, I thought I saw a section at one point where below the windows in the bathhouse.
The ceiling height in there runs about 11 feet 4 inches, plus or minus. Depends on where exactly you're at, but it's generally around 11 feet. And the tile goes up to 8 feet, so everything above that would be painted.
The ceilings are above the windows, okay. Okay. I thought I saw a section in there where the ceiling was below, and it kind of tapered over to...
I think there was in the old, the concession stand of the place where the lifeguards, that was lower. Or maybe not. No, it wasn't, because you had that. No, it wasn't lower, sorry.
So the HVAC in these areas?
There isn't.
Yeah, this is exhaust only. So there's louvers above the doors and a couple of locations on the walls. And you've got a big exhaust fan on the roof, and it draws in fresh air. So all of that, if you're washing something down, all that moisture goes out the roof.
So operable windows could be an advantage to just get fresh air into there?
You're going to have louvers there already that will be able to draw. If you do an operable window, that does add another level of expense versus a fixed window.
Have you gotten a cost for the storefront glass?
It was, so we did price that, and it was roughly in between the cow wall and the painted windows. And just felt like, due to the expense of what one window costs, it was pretty minimal to buy up from tempered glass to cow wall.
I just think if we're going to do a cost savings to move that money somewhere else, I think just going to a storefront with an obscure glass makes a lot more sense, and it's tempered. Your tempered glass would probably perform as good, if not better, than the cow wall.
It can, but when you have a failure on it, the entire thing fails instead of just one little spot.
Do we have a cow wall dealer in town where if something happened to those, it can come out and fix?
It's a, the supplier that we're working with is based out of Wichita. It's usually sold through a representative based on a territory. On the next alternate here?
Is it the breezeway? Oh, yeah, the breezeway.
So we had a number of different options for the breezeway. The first one, option one, was, I believe, what was in some prior renderings with the sloped metal roof on it and the wood decking on the underside. And so Hank and his team have put these different renderings, what it looks like above. But not only that, and I think more importantly, it's what it looks like as you walk up. So that first one is option one. You can see all the wood decking on the underside. You got a nice big sign at the front, really showcases the entryway into the building. On the second option, same thing, just without the roofing material on there. But we still have all the structure. On the third option, it's that same structure again, but with removable shade sails on there. There's a couple of different things that this one can affect. Without that permanent roof structure in there, you have a little bit less of a snow load on the buildings themselves. So the engineer would change a couple of things there. But primarily, it gives you the option that if you want to change colors, if you need to replace something, it's done just by simply ordering some new fabric.
And we'd be able to do those ourself, year after year? What's the estimated lifespan of, say, the material?
That's a good question. I don't know on that, but I can find out.
Okay. We don't have any wind, I'm sorry.
I think it depends too, if you leave them up all year too, or not.
And we do...
We would not leave them up.
We don't. I mean, if you remember, the umbrella structures, they all are made of the same fabric. In fact, Terry pulled some of those and looked at them previously, and we put those up at the beginning of every season, and we take them down at the end of every season.
How long have they been there? Five, four years, five years?
So the ones that we had at the end of this season, we repaired them when we took over management of the facility back in 2016. And we did repairs to the existing ones. We didn't buy new ones. And I'm not sure how long they had had those particular...
2003.
Well, that's a longer time than I...
Yeah, and so Hubers actually would sew them for us and make changes to them as we needed. And then we would have had to replace probably one this year. There was one that was in pretty bad shape. But other than that, we were doing pretty good.
On option number four?
Duty to protect, honor, and serve.
A little bit, doing a flat structure. This one also does add some additional columns. The other one was supported by the masonry walls on both the existing bathhouse and the new building. This one makes it a freestanding structure. And so you've got some additional footings and columns that support this. And it is taller as well.
I mean, it looks really cool, but I mean, as far as if our goal is to really do shade, I mean, I'm leaning toward option three, which was, I mean, it'd been easier if you would only given us, you know, a couple of options, but... So the more options you get, yeah, Jennifer, smiling, but that's, it's a hard decision, all these. That's why we've never built a house. I wouldn't be able to do it. Yeah, so I appreciate the information on the alternative three, because I think, I mean, I do think that adds a lot of shade, and that was one of the concerns that we had early on, was adding as much shade to our, to the new Garden Rapids as we could, so that people could really enjoy it. And I do think it gives you a place to get out of, I mean, I don't, if it's raining, you're not going to be there very long anyway, but...
So on these designs, I kind of, I mean, I don't want to get technical, but none of these are to approve the colors and the circle signage, anything like that, okay?
Right, that's right now just a concept. We're, I believe, this next couple of weeks, we're going to be getting into some theming.
Yes, so we will be getting into some theming here, probably. We will be getting into some theming here in the next month or so, at which point we'll bring back colors. Also some branding and a number of other options to you to show you how we start to theme and make sure that this feels like Garden City-specific.
Yeah. Oh, neat, okay. Well, thank you.
Yeah, just kind of looking at, you know, your presentation and the opening brochure, just, I can kind of see an otter surfing around the top of this. You know, give it that flow it needs, bring people in and just flow through.
I'm glad you have a great imagination, yes, Commissioner Ortiz. Any other questions or comments, or... And so, and I want to ask again, just again with Jennifer. So I know that there are some of these things we can approve, and so we can approve them all, or we can kind of pick and choose on these. So any discussion from the commission about some ways that you're leaning as we begin to make a motion, or...
I'd like to see the proposal come back for the storefront glazing, just so that we can see that option. Again, I don't think there's a whole lot of cow wall there to really give it that factor that we're kind of looking for.
And that's not a critical path item to our construction schedule. We've got time to make any decisions on that, so that should not be an issue.
But I do like the, I mean, like you said, Mayor, going with the solid structure on the roof, I think that kind of gives our purpose of storage for some of those. We talked earlier on about the tubes being stored in there, so during season, kind of, if you have an open concept, and wind can come up at any time and take those things away. But I think more of a solid roof structure would make more sense.
You're saying number one, or you're saying...
Yeah, option number one.
And the difference in the price was, I was surprised, it was...
Not much.
No. I mean, it depends on your material too, I guess, for your ceiling and what kind of wood you're using there.
Do you have a thought on that, Jennifer, about using that? If it is a solid structure, if you're using that for storage as opposed to an open-top structure, would it make a difference either way?
So I think if you use it, so I just think, like, from a staff perspective, having people get up in there would be maybe odd, and I don't know that we would...
Were you thinking more just putting the stuff inside, just underneath it, in that breezeway area?
After the season.
Not up top, but just in the breezeway area, like storing the stuff.
Oh, I see what you mean, okay. So there's a couple of things. One is that there's going to actually be something that runs down the middle of this to separate where people go out and where people go in, kind of to flow traffic. And so we could, one of the things, I mean, I think of like crates of life jackets or things like that, but everything else will have its place. So inner tubes will have areas where they're stored, and inside the concession area is where we'll store anything that we don't want people to get into during the night. So I would say we probably wouldn't store too much there, maybe a couple of things, but I would say we probably won't put too much in there.
Well, and I like the opportunity to change color, you know, I'm saying, over time, you know, with a less solid structure, but more of the, what do you call those?
Fabric.
Fabric, yes, thank you.
So the difference from staff perspective of the solid structure versus the shade structures, the shade structure, and this was explained to us during the meeting, was the solid structure is going to shed water and snow onto the roof that we're going to have to deal with over time, and with drainage and all that sort of thing as it coming off the building. Whereas the shade structures are going to disperse that differently and not straight onto the roof structure. And during the winter, we can take those down, and so we don't have that dispersment of snow melting and going on to the other two flat roofs. So that is one thing that they explained to us. The other thing that, from a staff perspective, that we thought was, that's something that we can, like, with a solid structure, I think it looks great. I think it gives a really nice picture. But staff likely wouldn't be doing any repairs or taking, you know, doing anything with that. But with the shade structures, we would be, that's something that we need to be mindful of, that somebody would be taking down and putting that up every year as well.
And I guess with, you know, if we choose option number three, I guess we can always go back to, well, you know, later on to a solid structure.
Yeah, you've got the structure in place.
Down the road. I mean, that gives us the flexibility at that point.
Yeah, it'll cost more.
I kind of like the idea of, you know, if we have teams or, you know, with the swimming and stuff, they can put their banners up there for display. Or, you know, we can change, kind of have like the art banner auction that we have. Like, we could do, like, for the Fourth of July, we could do kind of like flag, you know, the American flag themes, or we could do themes throughout the summer time. And that was what I was thinking, you know, if we had a swimming competition, we could put up, you know, whoever the leagues are or stuff, you know, to have their, show their banners or whatever. That's what I was thinking, something along those lines. Then we could change, that would help us change or advertise the different events and that type of thing. I kind of like the option three myself, because it's a little more, it gives you a little more flexibility. And it's not a solid structure.
Yeah, I like the windows. I mean, and so going back to the windows, I'm not saying I'm opposed to Commissioner Ortiz's idea of doing that. I know that, I mean, they really, functionally, I mean, there's no one that's going to be able to see in or out of those, I mean, as far as. So, I mean, if that's, I mean, the cost, I was surprised, was not that great of a cost. The parking lots were, I'm struggling. I just don't remember the condition of the parking lot. And so, you know, that's a lot of money.
What's your thought process, Commissioner Euler?
Well, I know, as I was looking at the different options for the breezeway, in dealing with the flat roof in the previous job, I know how time-consuming and not fun that can be, especially when you have those, you know, crazy snowstorms or just those, you know, big rains that come. But I really like the flexibility of breezeway option number three for the same reasons that Commissioner Sesta mentioned. But at the same time, you know, if we have a local person that could help take care of that or help make repairs on that, I think that helps as well. But I do like the flexibility of being able to have that option.
Any other comments on the other options, or...
Well, I mean, I think the cow walls are an interesting concept as well. But my question is, how do they stand up over time? Do they yellow? Do they, I mean, do they look good in 15 years, you know?
Yeah, so the cow wall is, has been a product that's been around for a while. It's not something that's new. I've been in construction for 20 years, and it's been there my whole career. Over time, since it is a manufactured material, it can start to break down over time. But it's going to be on the order of a life cycle of 20, 30 years, when you should be looking at doing replacement of things anyway. Everything that I've seen, it's been a good quality product.
And it has before, when cow wall first came out, some of those panels did turn yellow. I think they've gotten better into the production, that they're a lot better... I think they've gotten better into the production, that they, they're a lot better quality.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, I have no issues with cow wall, I just, I do have issues with the expense and where it comes from, where we have local glass people here in town who are struggling. So storefront to me is where we can get obscured glass, you get the opaque look, you can, you can put molins in there, as many as you want to minimize the, the size of the panes, so just a quarter inch glass, give you that, that tempered, tempered glass, so in case, you know, a kid doesn't have much force on a rock, but he could break, but they could do the same thing with cow wall. So I'm just looking at, at that standpoint, as far as local, so.
And that's something that if, like I said, just schedule wise, it doesn't impact our schedule right now, we don't need a decision on it today. And so if you do want to see a different option for that, we'd be happy to present one.
That would be great.
Okay, we'll, we'll plan on doing that.
So I know that we want to, I, I know we'd like to move on some of these items, and I know we need to, and so, so it says here, so I'm looking at the alternatives. Can you talk to the alternatives, Jennifer, and how we can?
Yep, absolutely.
So some of the buy ups and how we might, if that makes sense, so.
Okay, so one of the things that you need to be aware of, that you need to decide today, is whether or not you approve bid package number two at the $3,904,270. That is, that is at the forefront of our discussion today, and, and the first thing that we were coming to talk to you about. The, after you get past that point, so that's decision number one. Once you get through that, then you have four buy up options. The first is in relationship to the tile that we talked about, for the $43,000 and, and change. The second is for the cow wall in place of the windows, which you guys were just talking about, potentially pushing that down the road to see what, what kind of bid you can get from maybe a local person for just a, a glass. The bid package number two, just to reiterate, does include the windows that are presently there, just painted. So as approval of that package, that's what we would be going with if there was no decision on that today. Same thing with the tile, not choosing the upgrade on the tile, leaves tile in the showers, but not in the rest of the bathhouse area. Not making a decision on the cow wall today leaves the windows as is. With the team, if you want to give them specific direction to do something else, you can do that. Same thing with the tile, you could always give them specific direction that you wanted in a certain location, but not in another location, and we can pull up that map if you want to look at that specifically. The third one, being in relation to the mill and overlay in the parking lot, you know, I would be happy if, if that's not something you're prepared to make a decision on today, and we, we are set up in the parking lot, so I'm guessing we have a little bit of time to make that determination, because that's where all the equipment's set up. I would be happy to take, or I'm sure Matt would be happy to take each one of you individually to that parking lot to take a look at it before you make that decision. And we could put that on along with the.
Windows.
Any other directives that you may have on the 15th of this month. And then the last one is the breezeway decision with the bid package number two inclu- including no breezeway, and then the four that were presented to you, being the, the arched with the, the true roof, the metal, metal style roof, the arch with the shade structure, the arch without anything in between the arches, and then the flat style pergola look that you, I think of a backyard type pergola style on that entryway. So that would be your four options for the breezeway. And I am not sure on a timeline for that.
That one is, is somewhat critical, because there are some foundations that need to be designed and things like that.
All right, so, so let's go ahead and, so if we have a motion to take up some alternatives, we can talk about the bid package two first, and then if we will, can we take the alternatives after that? Is that correct, or do we have to do it all at once?
I don't think it's.
So, so we need one motion that includes either your approval or not approval of the bid package, and then whatever buy ups that you're going to add, and the price of those buy ups, or the cost of those buy ups.
Okay.
And I can help you through that, if, if anybody makes a motion, I can help.
It's not going to hurt anything as far as the timeline goes to not decide on this today, correct?
Yeah, we have to do, yes, we have to do.
Yes.
So I'd like, so I'd like to make a motion.
The, the breezeway, it's kind of, we need to make a.
All at Todd.
The critical point would be to make the decision on the breezeway.
Right, and the bid package.
Well, okay.
So what I'd like to do is, I'm, I'm going to go ahead and I move, we approved bid package number two at a value of $3,904,270, with the buy up option of the arch beams, with number three, the arch beams with a shade covering between the beams that would be taken down between seasons, overall cost of the project of $128,804, with an annual cost of the bond of $8,600. Also that we move the other three items for consideration later on down, down the road, so we can get.
On September 15th.
September 15th.
Second.
So it's been moved in second, and thank you, Commissioner Sesta, I don't think I could have repeated it. Any other further discussions?
I, I, I'm just going to express my concern about the, having employees get up there and take those down and storm away with, with it being fabric.
So noted, any other questions or concerns? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same saying?
Nay.
So motion carries four to one? Okay, thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I think Jennifer has another thing.
I do, I have one more thing, and I'm going to steal Ceilin's pointer.
There was a surprise that you talked about, Jennifer, so.
Okay, so, this morning, every Tuesday morning before commission meetings, we are having OAC meetings, and this morning, Todd gave me a look as if he had some really bad news, and said he needed to speak with me, and I got a little nervous, but what he actually brought forward is, and I'm going to step away and, and show you, this item here. So I want to point out while I'm standing. I was afraid I'd pull the podium over. So I want to point out, this slide does not exist, and I wanted to show you this drawing, but we didn't have enough time to get a, a plan together that, that removed that and had everything exactly as it is. So this is our large fly high that is in existence, this is our small fly high, and this green slide does not exist in our water, in Garden Rapids. This slide here, and this slide here are the existing slides that go into, they're like a body slide, and then the plunge pool. This slide here is a new addition, and the providers, the CEM and Splash Tacular, who are providing all of the pool materials for this water park, approached McCowen Gordon about giving us this slide. It is called the. Yeah, so basically you stand up, it, it's.
I have a feeling the name of it just got made up.
Yeah, 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 we're totally, yeah, the, the name of this is something that I, is slipping my mind. However, you stand up inside this slide, it's, it's, gives the impression, as they describe on their website, of water skiing. So you're, you're sort of on your heels, and your arms are above, and your body fits standing into that. And, and this is actually a slide that we talked about early on. Shannon's shaking his head because he remembers that. We had a lot of discussions about what could set us apart in our discussions with what's different that other water parks don't have. And so this was actually one of them, but it came at a price tag of, a price tag of around $650,000. And Splash Tacular is interested in selling more of this particular slide. And in order to do that, they need to create promotional materials, and they need to have someone that they can send to go and, and have them experience the slide. And so they, they approached McCowen Gordon and asked them to approach the client, which is all of you, and see if this is something that we would want to add to our project. This is not something you're going to decide today, this is simply a preview of that this is coming. I have requested that the person who, who runs or operates Splash Tacular from the, the pool slide, come to your next meeting on September 15th and talk to you a little bit more about it. But it would come at no cost to our facility, and it would be, we would be on the leading edge of this particular slide.
Construction wise, though?
Does it change the design?
And so we've talked about a couple of things. One of the questions that was initially asked by the construction team is if it would require another lifeguard, and because of the way that it's on the slide tower, our slide attendant that would be standing up here to watch this slide would also be able to monitor this slide, so it would prevent us from having to add another staff person. It does require a pump and a couple of other things, but I'll let Todd tell you what those are, and what the cost of that might be, or if there is any cost on that.
Thanks, Jennifer. We were a little surprised and a little excited, and frankly, a little skeptical. So we did a little, we did research on this. The initial standup slide was at the very top flat platform, and it was over 400 feet long. It was, it was, it was a long slide. There were a lot of foundations, a lot of steel involved with this. This one is a shorter version. You see, it just comes out and around and goes back down. It's about 140 feet roughly long. And like Jennifer said, they just, they want to promote this, they want, they want to be able to tell people, hey, go to Garden City, go try this out, see if you like it. The, this only requires a 200 gallon a minute pump, which in the slide world is pretty small, and it's a 10 horse power electric motor, so you would have the consumption fees associated with that. There is no cost to the city. Splash Tacular is going to pay CEM to do the foundations, the piping, the pump, whatever their costs are. They've, they've got a fair amount of money invested in this, and they want, they want a tangible product to have people go try out. And so we were.
That is exciting.
Yeah, we were excited when they, they approached us, but want to do our due diligence on it as well. So we did talk to Jennifer about, or we, we asked them about insurance requirements, about lifeguards, and about just some lifecycle costs with this. Just want to be able to, to tell everyone that, what the costs are going to be, and, and things that maybe when you have something like this, that's, that's free, you want to know, you want to know all the, all the items associated with it, so.
Thank you. No, that's exciting, that is exciting. Wow, that is a surprise, so.
And it was called the Otter Surfer Slide?
It could be.
We are creating names, and we'll take those suggestions.
There will be, yeah, there will be an otter somewhere, or there better be, so.
And then the other slide, you said that.
Was that there before, or it just was?
So initial, so our water park, Garden Rapids, only had four slides. We had two slides off of the, we had the two twisty slides, and I, one's a body and one's a plunge slide, and then we had two fly high slides, one high fly high and one low fly high. And this one was from like the original, original design, when we had three, and they, they were trying to look for a place to stick in this one, and so this was the drawing that we got. But our Water, Garden Rapids at the big pool will have five total slides off of their slide tower, and this, this actually depicts six. The, the army green next to the other fly high will not be part of our design. And they're actually going to work, they've already notified WTI to get to work on drawings that have exactly what it will look like, and when we come to you on the 15th to make a decision as to whether or not you want to accept this offer, we will have Spectac- Splash Tacular and also the design drawing, so that you can see what this looks like before you make a decision. But didn't want to wait to tell you, even though we only found out, and it was a little bit.
That's great.
It wasn't perfectly organized, but it was, it was exciting, and we wanted to share it with you all.
They approached us late Friday afternoon, and then we got some responses back late yesterday afternoon on the items we talked about.
Well, I think this also speaks to the job that you're doing here in Garden City, and so from their approach to you, they're obviously seeing that you're doing something exciting and different, so that's, thank you, yeah, what a neat offer.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Okay. I was thinking you were going to tell us you found something underneath the big pool, finally. People keep asking me, what was underneath the big pool? And I said, I, I have not heard of anything, so.
For the record, there's a lot of sand under there.
I was going to say, that's probably where all the flies are coming from.
Let's hope not. Thank you.
I think we've concluded the business for this meeting, so we're ready for commissioners' reports.
Commissioner Dick, you're first.
Great pre-meeting. It's good to see what Mike and everybody with KMEA is doing with our power situation and, and the great strides forward, and how that is building our community and building the, the surrounding communities as well, is with that, so it's a good pre-meeting. Just remember, school is back in session, so cross, crosswalks, all that stuff, pay attention, because it's been probably longer than you've ever been without having kids out on crosswalks. So pay attention to that, be kind to parents, be kind to teachers, be kind to administrators and the kids. It's, everybody's still learning how this is all going to work. And then just like Mayor Underwood said, the sales tax numbers came in for the August collections, and it was a record August collection ever, so things still look like we're doing pretty well as a community.
Thank you. Commissioner Sesta.
Yes, we're open for business, so please come and shop in Garden City.
Yes, exactly.
I agree with everything that Commissioner Dick mentioned. Also, please fill out your census if you have not done so. It's important, not only for the community, our representation, but also for our school system, as well as funding for various projects, along with, you know, these type, type of projects that we even talked about today, we get funding from the census on, on some of the projects that we actually discussed today. So it's important that you fill that out, and it's very easy, it takes about 10 minutes, it's easy to complete. So I know the deadline's getting close, I think it's at the end of this month, actually, so very important to fill out the census, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Ortiz.
Yeah, just kind of like to echo what Commissioner Dick and Sesta had mentioned too, just get out there and, and get you recorded on the census, so that's very important. But I also like to thank just everyone involved in the city, as far as, you know, being able to go and talk to for any questions on some issues with your home, or like Mr. Gonzalez was talking about, just to work things out and, and seek that information to get things done, as far, it doesn't matter how big of an issue it is. And, you know, there, the city's just been really good about opening the door and, and then, or making a call and asking those questions, so thanks for, for being there on that. Also, just thank you, everybody, new developers coming into town, new businesses coming into town. I'd like to think that, well, I don't like to think, but I, I think I, I know that for a fact, if you do come to Garden City and you want to open up a business here in Garden City, it's a great location, there's lots of friendly people out here that would actually welcome you into the Garden City community. So get with people, connect, and hopefully that we can see a new business coming to town every, every month.
That would be great.
And a new home, like every two hours.
Every two hours, yeah.
Every two hours, yeah.
Commissioner Orle.
I enjoyed the pre-meeting as well. I, who knew that it could be such an exciting topic? But it really was, there was, there's just a lot, as, as I was thinking about it over lunch, I thought, my goodness, there's just so much. And so, but I just think it's wonderful, you know, what you've done, and, and what we do with K, KMEA, and just all of the logistics and infrastructure, it's really impressive, so thank you for that. In addition to being careful around schools and stuff, make sure that crossing guards, I mean, I know that I, I'm friends with quite a few different crossing guards, and they tell me on a pretty regular basis how sometimes it can be a little tenuous at those intersections, and so make sure you slow down and pay attention to what they're doing, and that's all I have.
Okay. Well, echoing, yeah, that's the hard thing going last, and you have to say, I don't want to say dito to everything, but I do want to say, I'm really proud of the work our, that Mike has done in the KMEA, KMEA, yeah, I did say it correctly. I'm excited about the way that you, the planning, I wanted to say thank you just to Commissioner Sesta and the commissions who came before us, who really thought ahead of time about what it might look like for all of us, you know, today. And so where we are today, I mean, it took a lot of forethought, and a lot of people stepping out, a lot of courage. So I'm excited about where we're headed with our energy needs, and that we have, that's, that's very stable. I just wanted to say also, great work for the staff, the reports lately have been incredible, I mean, lots of information, you know, I mean, really well done, and really well explained, and so, I mean, I, I feel bad I haven't had as many questions, so they're probably glad about that. I do want to say thank you to the Neighborhood Development Services, and especially Carol and her staff. I had some people approach me this week who really, they made, it was, it was a very stressful situation, but I'll tell you, the city staff and, and the departments of the city are willing to work with people. And they gave the, this person what they needed, and I really appreciated it. They came back and said they were treated with respect, that they really, that they got the thing that they needed, and it really wasn't about the ordinance or anything like that, it was really about, hey, I, we just need this help. So, you know, I, I really appreciate like the openness of our city and our departments to say, hey, how can we help you? That we are really here to serve our citizens, and I think that this is another great example I want to make sure and highlight. I think that this is another great example, I want to make sure and highlight. I know that we are approaching 75% on the census, and so I'm really excited about the people who have stepped up and filled out their census, so I don't want to negate those people who have, but it really is important, as many commissioners have pointed out, that we get the census, it is going to be done at the end of the month, they've talked about extending it, but that's not going to happen, so, yeah, this is no more time to procrastinate, it's time just to get, to get that all done. And with that, I think we're adjourned, I just want to say thank you to everybody, it was a great meeting today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I got to hit the gavel more than I've ever gotten to, so...